Get started. Let's call to order the June 16th, 2025 meeting of the Beacon City School District Board of Education. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vicki, can you call the roll? Delayed. Excused.
Here.
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 Here. Matt, can you point out the fire exits?
Yes, exits are in the back of the LGI.
Okay. Can we please stand again for a moment of silence to remember Diane White? She served in the school district for more than 20 years and she was a teacher's aide at South Avenue. Thank you. Okay, we're starting with public comment. Vicki, can you bring me the list? Thanks so much. Okay, first up is Beth Pogue.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? Beth Pogue, 22 Hammond Plaza. I did not expect this many people here. And I know I only have four minutes. So I just wanted to say that I'm here to start a conversation about inclusion. This is a conversation that I started many, many years ago and a lot of good things have happened in the district. But also, there's a long way to go. And I just wanted to restart that conversation and let you know that there's a lot to learn and a lot to happen. My son is in the middle school. He was in sixth grade this year. He came from JVF. He started in kindergarten in a 6-1-1 classroom, which is six teachers, one aide, and one teacher. And in his kindergarten year, one of the first things that happened is I found out on Facebook that all the kindergartners at JVF were going to a field trip at the Bardovan. And my kid didn't go. And when I asked why, it was because kindergartners, that class had a hard time sitting still. But of course, we all know that kindergartners have a hard time sitting still, right? It wasn't okay that that class was excluded from the field trip. Fast forward to graduation, the amazing principal at JVF came to tell us that our kids would be graduating with the other kindergartners. At JVF, they walk across the stage and they have a big barbecue. And we were told that our kids were going to graduate with the other class. And I was like, what was going to happen instead? Well, what happened the previous 18 years was that the kindergartners in that class graduated in the basement by themselves. And so my kid got to walk across the stage with his other buddy. And everybody agreed that it was amazing. And that started our journey to full inclusion by fifth grade. Partnership with the parents, with the teachers and the principal made it so we had full inclusion by fifth grade, which was an amazing success by all accounts. It was good for my kid, it was good for the Janette kids, it was good for the teachers, it was good for everybody. And then we jumped to the middle school and nothing came with us. And my kid is in a more restrictive environment this year. They want to put him in a more restrictive environment next year. And it's not okay. And the district is not doing the work to move towards more inclusion for students with disabilities. And it's evidence-based, inclusion is evidence-based, it's cheaper. Teachers get more support, students get more support, it's better for everybody. And it's the way we should be going. And I tell the kindergarten story to say that just because segregated classrooms are normal and they're common doesn't mean it's right. And we can have the will to change. We can change and we can do better. If you're a student with a disability in the District of Beacon in elementary school, chances are you do not go to your neighborhood school. You are not with the friends who live within walking distance. And that's not okay. The least restrictive environment is what our kids with disabilities should be afforded by the law. And going to a school that you're bussed to is not the least restrictive environment. And I just want to implore you to learn more. I am here to talk to anybody who wants to talk about it. And there's buckets, buckets, buckets of evidence that inclusion is better for school districts, for communities, for general education students, and for students with disabilities. Thank you.
That was perfectly timed. Thank you for sharing. Okay, next up is Pamela Posey. I hope I'm saying that right.
Hi there. My daughter Emma is a 12-year-old. Sixth grader at Rambout Middle School, and she is in a special needs class at this time. Last year in the fall, at JV Forestall, the four sets of special needs parents attended a meeting to discuss the transition to sixth grade and discuss what that would look like. The parents all agreed that the fifth grade class of inclusion was working well. And we would like to extend it to sixth grade. My understanding was that when Emma got to Rambout in the fall, that she would be in an inclusive core class with her peers. This past year at Rambout, Emma has one class with typical kids and is otherwise in a self-contained core class. This is not the least restrictive environment. There should be a balance to integrate typical kids and is otherwise in self... This is... I'm sorry, I lost my place. So this is not the least restrictive environment. There should be a balance to integrate typical and special needs together to provide them with support to thrive with their peers. At my daughter's recent IEP meeting, it was discussed to have four self-contained core classes for seventh grade. It is unacceptable to have contained classrooms when we know inclusion works. They all excelled in their fifth grade class. There are so many other districts that have implemented programs that work well for special needs children. So why not take a page from their playbook and implement it here to make the appropriate changes? There is still stigma for these special kids within the school. They are segregated from their peers. And typical kids are less likely to include them. Emma's twin sister told me that the typical kids called them the special kids. This segregation needs to stop. With my daughter's class at Rambout, because it has been heartbreaking. Her coming home and saying that she has no friends and nobody wants to sit with her at lunch, nobody wants to befriend her. And it is really devastating, you know, that with all of these kids and teaching all of the special needs kids and having therapy for them, it doesn't seem like it's fair to... It's not fair to them. So at my meeting two weeks ago, it was brought to my attention from Christina Bartley at Emma's IEP meeting, that this is a systematic problem at Beacon with inclusivity. So I'm imploring you to please do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anybody else wish to make a public comment who didn't sign in? No? Okay. All right. Next, we are moving on to tonight's workshop, which is recognizing tenures and retirements. So Matt, do you want to...
Just first, thank you both for making the public comments. I apologize about, we have a few contractors in the building tonight, so I think we ran out to stop them, so I apologize for the interruption to that. But thank you for coming and sharing. And in terms of the workshop, I think we had an order set, and I don't have it in front of me right now, but you have it, Mr... You're gonna... All right. Mr. Archer has it.
Good evening, everyone. It's a nice celebration of all those folks in the district receiving tenure tonight and those folks who are retiring. We have 17 teachers, teacher assistants, receiving tenure tonight. And we have 15 people retiring, which represents 334 years. That's a lot of experience. And first up is our high school principal, Dr. Dwyer. And before Dr. Dwyer starts, I just want to thank Ms. Meg here for organizing the program and all of the items being handed out tonight. So thank you and thank you for the cake.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Archer and Meg, for organizing this. We'll start with our tenure recipients. We have four at the high school. And we'll start with Melanie Hammett. I'm very pleased to recommend Ms. Hammett for tenure. During her time at Beacon High School, Ms. Hammett has introduced a number of new courses. She's taught Introduction to Business Marketing, Introduction to Sports Marketing, Introduction to Occupation, Job Skills, Personal Finance, and Advanced Placement African American Studies. Ms. Hammett has developed innovative project-based learning opportunities in her classes, including a stock market game through which students participate in an online simulation of the global capital markets that engages them in the world of economics, investing, and personal finance. She advises our Finance and Entrepreneurship Club. She's a member of our School Equity Team and also a member of the Black Teacher Project, through which she develops and applies culturally relevant, responsive, and sustaining instructional strategies. Ms. Hammett is also helping to coordinate our school's effort to establish a Career and Technical Education Department right here at the high school. She's already gotten the ball rolling. She met with the state last week to learn how we can develop a CTE program as a plus-one pathway similar to the SEAL of Civic Readiness. Ms. Hammett's really beloved by her students. Every time I walk by her room, she has students in there every one of her free periods. She's got kids eating lunch, studying in there with her. Students see her as a really trusted and supportive adult that they can turn to. We are really, really grateful to have Melanie on our team, and we look forward to the many contributions that we know she will continue to make. Congratulations. Melanie, you want to come down and get your...
Our next tenure recipient at the high school is Nicole Piasenti. Ms. Piasenti has taught and co-taught multiple E&amp;L courses at the high school. She's collaborated with a number of teachers, both in the co-teaching capacity and in general support of our E&amp;L students. She's also taught in the Multicultural Language Learning Through Art and Community Summer Program. Ms. Piasenti is a really strong advocate for E&amp;L students who see her as a supportive adult that they can count on. Ms. Piasenti's been active in our school community throughout her tenure here. She advised the class of 2024 during their junior and senior years, raising thousands of dollars and planning signature events, including Junior Prom, Senior Prom, and last year's Senior Trip, which was the first overnight senior trip we've taken in quite a while. At my urging, Ms. Piasenti and her co-advisor, Ms. Alvarez, began advising the class of 2026 this year, and she'll remain with them through their senior year. They're kind of our dynamic duo of class advisors. She's also advised the College Prep Club and the Discovery Club. I'm really excited to be celebrating Ms. Piasenti tonight. Congratulations. She also gave up Yankee tickets to be here tonight, so that shows her commitment. Our next tenure recipient, I don't believe, is here tonight. Maria Van Houten. Today was actually her first day back from maternity leave, so she told me she wasn't sure if she could spend another few hours away from her newborn. During her time here at the district, Ms. Van Houten has taught Ceramics 1, Ceramics 2, Studio Art, Advanced Art at the middle school, and ADL Studio Art. Ms. Van Houten is really well-regarded by her students and her peers in the department. She plans detailed, engaging lessons. She provides individualized support to students. And she's served on a number of building committees. So congratulations to Ms. Van Houten. And our final tenure recipient, I'm not sure if I saw him tonight, Fraser Rinsted. I'm pleased to recommend him for tenure. During his time at the high school, Mr. Rinsted has taught Regents in ICT, Earth Science, Conceptual Earth Science, Astronomy, Forensic Science. He proposed a cool paleontology class that will run for the first time next year. He's advised the Science Club in the class of 2028. He consistently plans engaging lessons, collaborates well with his co-teachers, and I'm confident that he will continue to make a positive contribution to our BHS community. Congratulations to Fraser. And we have four retirees that we are also honoring tonight. Our first retiree, she is not here tonight, is Lori Malin. She started at Rambout in the 2004-2005 school year. Ms. Malin taught seventh grade science for many years, running the middle school science fair and partnering with organizations that included the Kari Institute and the Institute of Ecosystem Studies. She planned a number of field trips to local farms and environmental organizations over the years. She advised the Marathon Project, ran the Little Doctor Program, planned multiple blood drives, and built a garden and a garden program at Rambout. Ms. Malin has been with us at the high school for the last two years, and all of us at the high school have appreciated her kindness and willingness to jump in and support however needed. We wish her the very best in retirement. Our next retiree, Mary Ann Hamilton. She also couldn't be here tonight. Ms. Hamilton is retiring after 23 years as an educator, the first four of which were spent as a Humanities and Social Studies teacher. For the last 19 years, Ms. Hamilton has served as the Library and Media Specialist at Beacon High School, where she supported a generation of students in developing their research and writing skills and a passion for literacy. In an article honoring Ms. Hamilton in our school newspaper, one of our seniors, Sherad Tugel, wrote of the bond he has developed with Ms. Hamilton, saying, "You will be missed by me and so many other students. With your personality, you've truly felt like one of us at times. You've been nothing short of a wonderful friend, and I hope you enjoy your retirement. You deserve it." I certainly echo those sentiments, as I wish Ms. Hamilton the very best in her retirement, some of which will be spent at her family farm in Ireland. So congratulations to her. Okay, our next two retirees are here tonight. So next up is Debbie Smith. Debbie is retiring after 40 years as a teacher. She began her career at Monroe, Orleans, Bosse's, and Rochester, where she taught for nine years, and then she has spent the last 31 years here in the Beacon City School District. First at Glennum, then Sargent, then Rambout. She was between Rambout and the high school for a number of years. She's taught just about everything under the Special Education Sun, ICT Special Class, Life Skills Resource Room at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. For the last two years, Ms. Smith has served as our first-ever Transition Coordinator, which she describes as a challenging and incredibly rewarding experience, as she supported students and families in a different capacity. She laid a really strong foundation for us to continue with this position over the next few years. I'm really grateful to her for that. So congratulations and thank you to Debbie Smith. And our last retiree, Gina Fontenot. Gina has spent the last 35 years in the Beacon City School District, including the last 22 at Beacon High School. Before that, Ms. Fontenot taught Forestall, South Avenue, Rambout, and then she moved up to the high school, ICT Special Class Resource Room. I don't have the time to list the number of different subjects she taught, though she did tell me that she taught Special Class Physics in Rambout, which she described as like the worst experience of her life. Middle school physics, I can imagine, gets tricky. Ms. Fontenot has served two stints at the Special Education Department Coordinator at the high school, the second of which came over the last three years. Soon after I became principal, our longtime Special Education Coordinator left the district, and so we needed a respected veteran teacher to step up and lead the largest faculty department in the district, which Gina did. She's also been involved in the BTA, serving as the Union Secretary, Retirement Representative, and State Delegate. Gina is a former teacher of mine, and I know firsthand how strong an advocate she is for her students. This is a sentiment that was echoed in the January edition of our newspaper. If you're an educator, you'll definitely want to check that out. It was a really beautiful article. One of Gina's current students, Mason Allen Castro, wrote of her... He was describing Tuesdays with Maury, which was the book that she was reading with her class, and Mason said, quote, "You've been my Maury, Ms. Fontenot, and I hope in some way I've been a little bit like Mitch, taking your lessons and truly appreciating the time we've shared. As you retire, I hope I can be one of your last best students, someone who reflects the impact you've made over the years." Congratulations to Gina.
Mr. Saltish from the middle school.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have two TAs, six teachers, and a retirement. So it's going to be hopefully not super long for me. But it just tells you, when you have six teachers up for tenure, that means you had a really busy summer four years ago. So four years ago, before all these teachers were coming up for tenure, we spent the whole summer interviewing them, doing demo lessons, getting to know them. That was a really busy summer, and now we're going to have a really busy evening because they've done a wonderful job at Rambout for us. So we're going to start with our teaching assistants. First up is Lori Bonays. She's been a TA in Ms. Koto's ADL class for the past four years. Prior to coming to Rambout, Lori spent 15 years as an aide at JVF. Lori's kind, caring, and compassionate, and those traits show up every day with her at work. We are lucky to have her supporting our students in the ADL program. I know she's not here this evening, but congratulations, Lori. Is Corinne here? Oh, you're right behind me. So next up, we have Corinne Marino. She has been a TA for the past four years at Rambout. She works with Michelle Arakka, providing support and instruction to our Special Class sixth-grade students. She also pushes into a number of sixth-grade electives to provide support. And we know pushing into the electives can be a whirlwind because there are a lot of students in those rooms. We thank you for all the time and effort you put into that. Ms. Marino and Mrs. Arakka together provide a nurturing and supportive environment. They truly have made an excellent team at Rambout Middle School, and you are a big part of that, so congratulations. Next up, we have Antonetta Iamviano, and this is for teacher tenure. She has spent the last four years teaching Special Class Social Studies in grades six to eight. Ms. Iamviano has been an amazing addition to RMS. Her approach to Special Class has truly changed our Special Class in Social Studies. She supports and fosters a safe learning environment, and I've had the pleasure of observing her room and have left impressed every time. Her students speak highly of her. In fact, I had a wonderful conversation with Troy this afternoon, and he wanted me to congratulate you personally and let me know what a wonderful and amazing teacher you are. So I thank you for the passion you bring to our students every day. You deserve this. Congratulations. Next up for tenure at Rambout, we have Vanessa Kostaki. Did I say that correct? Do I get a thumbs up or no? We also call her Ms. Kay. She has spent the last four years at RMS teaching ICT Social Studies in grades seven and eight. She has done an outstanding job working with both Mr. Castaldi and Mr. Hadlin in the seventh and eighth grade inclusion setting. We were lucky to find a Special Education teacher with a Social Studies background. You don't often get one of those, and it truly has made a huge difference in our ability to have integrated lessons in the ICT setting. So I thank you for bringing that to Bill and Mike every day and for supporting all of our students at Rambout Middle School. Thank you so much. Next up, we have Amanda Tarrant. She has spent the last two years at Rambout as our Speech Language Pathologist. Prior to coming to RMS, Amanda spent two years at JVF. Ms. Chadwell Dennis came to me in the summer and let me know that somebody by the name of Ms. Volpe was looking to transfer to Rambout. So I had an amazing interview question for her when I met her, which was, was there any relation to Anthony Volpe? Because I was just curious. And she said, no, unfortunately not. But we still welcome Ms. Tarrant to Rambout. And I'll tell you what, it's been a true pleasure since the day she got there. She has a passion for helping students learn to communicate. She makes every effort to be part of our larger school community by chaperoning field trips, including our overnight trips. And I would also like to congratulate her and her family on their new addition, which she has just returned to work. So congratulations. You deserve it. Okay, next up at Rambout, we have Kim Gonzalez. Kim has spent the last four years at Rambout teaching sixth-grade ELA. Prior to coming to RMS, Ms. Gonzalez taught for a year in Putna Valley and two years in the Bronx. Mrs. Gonzalez has an excellent rapport with her students. She works hard to plan and deliver engaging lessons with an emphasis on student-centered activities. She is also highly involved in the school community. Mrs. Gonzalez has been the Student Council Co-Advisor for the past three years. She has also been involved with the Newspaper Club, Creative Writing Club, and Drama Club. She has been a great addition to our school community. Let me just... The next person also is a co-advisor for our Student Council. But I don't know if everybody understands just how much work doing Student Council is in addition to your regular teaching job. It takes a lot of time and effort and hours after the day is over to provide activities, dances, pep rallies for the students at Rambout. And it doesn't go unnoticed. We thank you so much for all of that, and congratulations on your tenure. Next up, we have another Ms. Kay. So Andy Carnavesos has spent the last four years teaching eighth-grade ELA at Rambout. Andy has excelled both in and out of the classroom. She has created a warm and welcoming classroom environment. Students are often greeted with kind sayings and welcoming remarks. Andy has also coached varsity cheerleading during the fall and winter for the past four years. She has been the eighth-grade advisor for all four years. She has been Student Council Co-Advisor for the past three years. She has also chaperoned and attends all of our trips. That is a big undertaking for one person to do. Eighth-grade advisor and student council and coach two seasons' worth of varsity sports and still work during the day as an English teacher. And she does it all with a smile on her face and never a complaint. And thank you so much for everything you bring to the school. Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, our last teacher that we have at Rombaut is Taylor Modica. Taylor has taught eighth grade health at Rombaut for the past four years. I did not personally interview Taylor. Mr. Giometta gets all the credit for the interview process with Taylor, but we thank him. Taylor approaches every day with a smile and truly loves her position at Rombaut. Her room is filled every morning and lunchtime with students coming to see her, dropping off bags, visiting her, just saying hello. She has created the bonds students will always remember, and we thank you for doing that. Taylor has coached JV girls tennis for the past three seasons and varsity and JV girls lacrosse for the past three years. Taylor also attends every school event possible, from sporting events to concerts, and she volunteers to attend every trip possible. She also wants to know how well she did as a chaperon on all those trips, and we often joke about the chaperoning, but it's really remarkable, the number of teachers that go out of their way to help us have trips for students, and they're making relationships constantly. So thank you so much for everything you do at Rombaut and all the effort you put into the students. Thank you. Next up, we have a retirement. Jean, I think you should come down for retirement. Come on. Yeah, come on. You have no choice. Everybody here is going to keep yelling until you come down. Thanks, Jean. So I'm going to give a little history about Jean, and you can be up here to correct me if I'm wrong, because we talked about it earlier. For anybody that's a true Beacon buff or loves to hear the older names, Jean was hired in the fall of 2005 by Lou Valacy and Dieter Schimmelfeng, right? Yeah, close, that's close, alright. She let me know today that in her interview process, she was waiting at Rombaut. The new library is currently under construction, and they returned from hiking Mount Beacon, all sweaty, to interview her for the position. And so that was her first introduction to Rombaut. Her first year, the library was in A113, a regular classroom at Rombaut Middle School with just books piled everywhere, but they promised her that if she could put up with one bad year, she would have an amazing library after that.
Not bad, just chaotic.
Chaotic, chaotic, they didn't say bad. So after that year, the library was finished as promised, and Jean is the one that opened the current Rombaut Middle School library, has spent the last 19 years as our librarian at Rombaut Middle School. She has turned our library into a welcoming environment for families, for students. It's not a quiet library, it's a fun library that students want to go. It's a middle school library, that's what it is. And the reason it is that way is because Jean's passion and support of our students. She knows every single student at Rombaut Middle School's name. They walk by, not only does she know their name, she knows how to say their name. She volunteers for us at the Moving Up Ceremony to read every eighth grader's name, and she makes sure it's read correctly, so that every family that's out there listening gets to hear their students or their child's name correctly, and she spends as much time as it takes to make sure she knows their name and how to say it properly, and that goes to tell you what kind of person she is and how much she cares about students and families here in Beacon. A little history on Jean. Prior to coming to RMS, Jean spent her early years raising her three daughters. She graduated SUNY Onyanta with a degree in business, finance, and economics in 1984. We discussed this before. She married her husband, Mike, a year later in 1985. And in just 1986, she welcomed their first child, Shannon, and that changed her career path. I say it changed it for the better because Rombaut ultimately, after she was done raising her children, I think she may have been encouraged by Mike possibly, to pursue something as they were getting older, and so Rombaut gained Jean. When we went one-to-one, Jean's our librarian, when we went one-to-one as a district, we would never have been able to do it at Rombaut Middle School if Jean did not step up and do all the little things that need to be done. We didn't ask her to do it. She just did it because she noticed nobody else was going to do it, and it needed to be done, and it needed to be done correctly. So she took over all the Chromebooks. Every time a student had a problem, they would go to her, she would give them loaners, she would troubleshoot it. Everything runs through our library. The IT department said, she's amazing, she's great, let her keep doing it, it's wonderful. I don't think we paid you any extra for it, but that's, that's, you're retiring now, so it's alright. I've had a real difficult time personally because Jean told me this year, I thought she was joking. I didn't see this one coming, and she said to me, I'm retiring at the end of the year. And I said, no, you're not. And so we hadn't really talked about it a lot this year. Jean is somebody that at the building level, I can go to for anything. She supports all her teachers.
Can I just say, he had a real denial problem.
Yeah, yes. Well, we're still offering you to return if you want, so. We're actually in the process of finding a new librarian and trying to find somebody that has the same traits as Jean, I just don't think is possible. So we're going to do the best we can to find somebody to continue on what you've created at Rombaut Middle School, and we wish you all the best in spending time with your grandkids.
Ms. Orser from Glenham.
I would like to start with Ms. Michelle Green. It is with great enthusiasm that I get to speak in support of Ms. Green and her candidacy for tenure in the Beacon City School District. She has been a dedicated and dynamic phys ed teacher at Glenham. She brings unmatched energy and also professionalism to everything that she does, whether it's in the gym or by the pool or out in the community. Her PE classes are engaging, inclusive, and they build lifelong habits of health and wellness for our students. What truly sets Ms. Green apart is the way that she has integrated aquatic education across the district, making water play, swimming, and safety a priority for all grade levels. She even created a daily school-wide movement break at Glenham that helps students start their day focused and ready to learn, which has been a huge, a huge addition to the building. The kids love it. Beyond that, Ms. Green coordinates meaningful curriculum-based field trips like disc golf and serves as a trusted colleague and leader on our Sunshine Committee. Her relationships with the students and staff are rooted in respect, care, and a passion for making physical education fun. Granting her tenure is not just recognizing her excellence, it's also securing a future of continued impact and leadership for our district and especially at Glenham. Come on, yeah? That was my only tenure recognition for the night, so moving on to retirement, I have the honor of celebrating Ms. Kathy Hoteling, who has, somebody who has made a lasting impact on many lives in the district. She is not able to be here tonight, but she did say that she would be watching. Kathy has spent the past 21 years supporting students across the district. She began her journey at Sargent. She spent a few years at JVF, and then for the last six years, we've been lucky to have her at Glenham. Throughout her time in the district, Kathy has worked with nearly every grade level except for pre-K, and she's brought warmth and patience and joy to every classroom she's been in. In her most recent position as an AIS teacher, one of the things that Kathy loved the most about her work was watching students grow and seeing the moment when they finally had something click for them and that they really understood what she was teaching them. To her, there was nothing more rewarding. She's also brought, brought her energy and heart to our morning arrival. She was a little overzealous with the stop signs, so I did pull her out of the crosswalk, but she does greet every student with a smile. Kathy believes that starting the day with kindness can make a difference, and she is 100% right, so she always strives for that. She has supported Calico Ball, trips to Sharp, chorus and band concerts, Field Day, field trips. She has always leaned into the joy of learning and the fun of school life. She really does help make Glenham a special place. Now that Kathy is heading into retirement, she has just as much love and purpose. She's planning to spend time with her 91 and a half-year-old grandmother, or mother, sorry, who is not only a heart attack survivor, but also the source of Kathy's strength. She's also looking forward to making memories with her three young granddaughters and maybe even checking off a few postponed house projects. Kathy, we want to thank you, your lug and, for your love and the legacy that you've left behind. You will be missed, but we are excited for you, so congratulations. Sorry, this time of the school year is like a little exciting, and I use my voice a lot, so I don't have much left, I apologize. My next retirement is also not here, but Mr. Tom Hoyle. I want to celebrate the incredible career and well-earned retirement of Tom. He has been a cornerstone of Glenham Elementary School and the Beacon District for 30 years. Retirements are fun because we get to learn about the teachers before. I've only been at Glenham for nine years, he's been there for 29 years, so Tom's career has been nothing short of extraordinary. For three decades, he has dedicated himself to teaching fifth grade. 29 of the years were at Glenham, one was at Sargent. From the first day up until now, Tom has brought consistency, curiosity, and compassion to his classroom. His students have learned through lots of different experiences, which have sparked their creativity and imagination. So while preparing for this speech, I learned a lot about Tom. Early in his career, he launched an intramural program and then also a unique program called Flight Club. There, students built paper airplanes, hot air balloons, and rockets, and did hands-on learning. He did not stop in the classroom. He then organized trips to the Newburgh Air Force Base and the Duchess County Airport, where students explored real aircraft and even toward the aircraft control, or the air traffic control tower. For many students, it was a once-in-a-lifetime experience, and Tom has continued with rocket building every year at Glenham, and we do a very big launch at the fifth grade picnic every year. Tom also has been a coach in the district. Over the course of 16 seasons, he's coached girls varsity tennis, boys modified, and boys JV tennis. His dedication to helping the students grow academically and athletically is something that his players and students will remember. He has also been instrumental in organizing more than 30 trips to Sharp Reservation, countless other learning activities outside of the classroom walls, including overnight trips to Boston, Ellis Island, Mystic Seaport, Plymouth Plantation, Stirbridge Village, where he really gave the students an opportunity to stand where history happened and to experience things like whale watches, see science in action, culture, and also to see storytelling come alive. Like I said, Tom could not be here tonight, but we would like to thank him for giving so much of himself to the students at Glenham, at Sargent, his colleagues, and the community. And congra, in his retirement, he does plan to explore Spain for one year, and then he has promised to return to Glenham as a substitute teacher.
Ms. Sussam Wiggins from JV Forestale.
All right, so good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing two very, very special, remarkable educators who are retiring after decades, decades of dedicated service to our school community, Mrs. Terry Lucido and Ms. Luan Joyce. I also have the honor of recognizing our tenure staff, Mrs. Jessica Ramdeen, as she will be tenured as a teaching assistant in the Beacon City School District. So I'm going to start with Ms. Ramdeen. Ms. Ramdeen has been a key player in our school community, serving in our 612 Special Education Classroom at JVF during the past three years. In this role, she has brought patience, care, and dedication to her work with our students. Her ability to step in and help where it's needed has not gone unnoticed. She's a key player, she's a collaborator, and it's evident that she loves her job. She has been a great addition to our school community, even from coming up with new ideas and ways that we can add festivity to our monthly birthday breakfast, to stepping in and supporting students who need extra support in order to participate in after-school clubs. She is always willing to help, always willing to step in, and we are excited to see how she will continue to grow in the years to come at Forestale. Congratulations, Jessica. All right, so probably need, I thought it was tissue, Brian. So as I mentioned, we have two remarkable educators, three remarkable educators, two teachers, Mrs. Terry Lucido and Ms. Luan Joyce, and one of our teaching aides, Ms. Shannon Snetsler. So I'm going to share a little bit about each of them. All right, Terry, Mrs. Lucido, has spent her entire 37 years of teaching, her teaching career, in the very classroom that she's teaching in this year at JVF, the same classroom. She has taught children of her students and maybe even children of those students, maybe, right? I know. And her teaching partner, Ms. Shannon Snetsler, who has been a wonderful support in both Terry's class for the past 19 years, but also in our school, has truly been a gem to our school community. The two of them have been a part of a dynamic duo that brought consistency, care, and excellence to their work, work every single day. I saw evidence of this today as the Beacon High School Class of 2025 visited our school for their senior walkthrough. They walked through the halls in their caps and gowns, they were, you know, we cheered them on, and they get to reminisce and see former teachers. And as they exited the building and made it to our kindergarten wing, they stopped by the kindergarten classroom, and it was just filled with hugs, smiles, some tears, as they embraced both Terry and Shannon and thanked them for teaching and loving on them in the ways that they did. Now, we're talking about the Class of 2025, and I mentioned all the years of service that Shannon has, 19 years, and Terry, 37 years. From day one, they have always poured out this level of love and care for students and for each other and for our school community. They both have truly been a pleasure to work with in the years that I've been at Forestale, and you don't find that, especially in the years winding down to retirement, that people show this willingness to learn, grow, or to step in and lead, but Terry, for one, has bought a new love of pickleball to our school community. Kids love it, and I don't think that club is going anywhere. Both she and Ms. Snetsler have served in leadership roles representing their unit, their separate unions, and have been a great support for their colleagues and for one another. They are always stepping up to show each and every one of us how we love, care, and be a JVF Falcon for our students each and every day. Congratulations, Terry and Ms. Shannon Snetsler.
We're going together. This is us doing the Thelma and Louise.
All right, Mrs. Joyce. All right, Mrs. Joyce. All right, Mrs. Joyce has given more than 25 years of dedication. Thank you, Brian. And extra special that she not only has taught at Forestale, but she also has been a Forestale parent. Her very own children, five boys, have all attended Forestale and in her classroom, which is super, super special. You wasn't their teacher. No, no, no.
I was.
And Luann not only has poured out love and support for our students and our school community within the classroom, but also beyond the walls of our classroom. Specifically, in 2004, Luann, with the support of a local sculptor, who happens to be her husband, Mr. Tom Joyce, created a sculptor garden at our school. And that space has become a treasure part of our school community, and it's something that will always help to remember you, your contributions, and all that you do to support kids and how your husband just stepped in to help as well. We truly thank you, and I love this space. I'm glad that it's there, and I know that it's something that we always will have to connect back to you. Additionally, Mrs. Joyce, as a first-grade teacher, always has new ideas. Similar to, as I previously said, willing to reinvent herself even in the years winding down to teaching. From taking our first graders to Storm King Art Center and then coming back and collecting random materials across the building just to make sculptures. But it was a lasting learning experience. It shows your dedication, your willingness to serve, learn, and grow is always going to be something that remains with us at Forestale. We thank you for your years of dedication to our students, our school, and our district. Congratulations, Luann.
From Sergeant, Ms. Biordi.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to everybody here for receiving tenure or for the retirement. I don't have any retirements, but I do have the pleasure of recommending three folks from Sargent for tenure. I also want to say congratulations to Jean. I think half of the administrative team had worked with Jean at some point over the years, so thank you for everything, Jean. And to Mr. Hoyle, I was in Flight Club that Cassandra mentioned, so I benefited personally from that. So congratulations to one of my teaching assistants, Debbie O'Connell, on receiving tenure tonight. Debbie is so good at her job that we've actually given her tenure twice. I feel incredibly lucky and fortunate to work alongside Debbie each day. When I first started at Sargent, I received this email from Debbie, and it still makes me laugh when I think about it. Cory read beautiful passages from the newspaper, but I'm going to read a sarcastic email from Debbie. Hi, I'm Debbie O'Connell, and I've been in the building since my middle son was in kindergarten, and now he's 24. I just want you to know that I'm a bit OCD and perhaps a little bit boisterous. I tend to make my presence known, and I always have a nickname that a lot of the kids use. They call me Bubbles. I got that nickname because anytime I would forget a student's name, I would just call them Bubble. So then it started, then they started calling me Bubbles. Mrs. O'Connell just makes me feel too old. I believe that your job should be enjoyable and fun when appropriate, so that's why I try, that's what I try to do. I am always willing to step in wherever needed. So Debbie has definitely kept those promises. She is consistently positive and has a ton of energy, which I love. Beyond her exceptional work ethic, what stands out most is her heart and her rapport with all of her Bubbles or her students. Debbie, she's even called me Bubbles the first couple of weeks. Debbie is deeply caring and builds loving relationships and makes everyone around her feel loved. We're lucky to have her on Team Sergeant, so congratulations, Debbie. The boisterous part is really about the Mets, so the other part about Debbie is she's a sports enthusiast, so she's always wearing orange and blue. Another TA tonight that I have the pleasure of recommending tenure for is Aggie Lopez. Aggie is always willing to step up and support whenever she's needed, especially in the main office. Her bilingual skills help us almost every day. Aggie is such an awesome support to the teachers that she works with. She's worked with a lot of the teachers in my building. This year, we threw her a real curveball, and she went from going from helping in fifth grade to being a teaching assistant in pre-K, and she knocked it out of the park. She's already making a difference with all of her students. Aggie's an aspiring teacher, and I know that your future class is going to be lucky to have you one day, just like we are really thrilled and lucky to have you at Sargent, so thank you. Another fun fact about Aggie, as you can see on our sweatshirt, she was the original Stitch fan before like all the movies and all the hype. I will. All right. Lastly, I have the pleasure to celebrate Mrs. Brianna Orlando tonight, one of our kindergarten teachers on earning tenure. Something that doesn't really surprise any of us who work with her because she's such a pleasure. Brianna brings a perfect mix of professionalism, positivity, and creativity to everything that she does. Brianna is the kind of educator whose warmth fills a classroom and who makes every student and colleague feel valued. She's one of those people that when you're around her, you just feel better just about yourself. It's really amazing. She pairs that compassion with an incredible work ethic. She constantly goes above and beyond to support her students, colleagues, and the whole Sargent community. She has a lot of creative ideas which have made a lasting impact through, you know, all of our work with the Positivity Project, through starting a newspaper at the elementary level, and it's the best read there is. It's going to become a real tradition to have this newspaper, so I'm really, you know, excited that you brought that to us. Brianna leads with her heart and brings her very best every day. I've been around a lot of teachers so far in my career in education, and what really impresses me about Brianna is that she has this soft front where she's very approachable and just really warm to students, but this strong back where she just like stands firm in her expectations for the students and really doesn't waver from what she thinks is right, which is, you know, really, really awesome quality to have. So she's a steadfast advocate for her students, and we're just really lucky to have you at Sargent, so congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse Morrell from our grounds and facilities couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to read what he wrote on Ian Chippendale, who we want to thank for 22 years of dedicated service to our district. Ian is, Ian is one of the first employees every day to make sure our buildings are ready for the school day. He keeps all of our buildings cool. As one of the district's licensed pool operators, Ian ensures that the pool is safe, functioning, and ready for swimmers every day. Prior to his time in Beacon, Ian spent many years working for IBM as an HVAC mechanic, accumulating knowledge and skills that he later brought to his employment here. Ian enjoys spending time with his family and golfing in his free time, and we all hope that retirement affords him the opportunity to do both of that in more time. So congratulations, Ian. Ms. Quateroni.
Hi, everyone. I'm here to speak about Karen Pagano. Karen Pagano unfortunately could not make it tonight, but we wanted to speak on her behalf. Karen Pagano worked for our school district for 13 years as the School Food Service Director. She came to us with a wealth of knowledge and experience in food, but this was the first time she worked in a school district. She diligently learned all the regulations of New York State Education Department and USDA to ensure our district was always in compliance. Over the years, she worked closely with the school nutrition office and endured several state audits that the district passed with flying colors. Karen was instrumental in starting programs in the district, including the Farm-to-Table, sampling of vegetables from our garden program, and providing a summer meals program. She was also an active member of the district's Wellness Committee. I think Karen's shining moment was during the pandemic. She and her kitchen staff figured out a way to feed the children in our community. Parents were able to drive by and pick up meals or have them delivered by our staff on school buses. When all other staff were home during that time, Karen and her staff came in and prepared meals. Karen worked hard preparing menus, ordering food, and coordinating staff to come in. The community was forever grateful for her leadership during this time. Karen officially retired in November of 2024. We asked her to stay on to consult until our new food service director started in February of '25. She's even also agreed to be a resource to Anthony Rollins, our new food service director, during his first few months in the position. Karen is a true professional and took great pride in her work. We want to wish her the best in retirement, and we all hope that she will continue to travel with her daughters. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. So I only have one person because my department only has one person. Dr. Lindell. Not that I'm bitter about that or anything, but anyway. So tonight, I'm here to speak about my wonderful and my brilliant Jean Marie Zabinski, who is leaving me and is retiring. Our confidential administrative school secretary, who has been working for the Beacon City School District for 21 years, five months, and seven days. Jean is actually born and raised, she is an OG of Beacon. She was born and raised in Beacon, attended the Beacon City School District. Her children also attended the Beacon City School District. And as a matter of fact, her career in Beacon is actually a second career because she actually worked for IBM. And after she got married and had children, she left IBM to raise her beautiful family and then decided to come and work for us so we could torture her a little bit for 21 years. And of course, when she came to work for Beacon, she worked, of course, in one of the oldest schools in South Ave, where she, I believe you attended South Avenue and your children attended South Avenue, correct? Just your children, all right. But so she went, so she attended, her children attended South Avenue, she worked there. And she went then, of course, to work for the maintenance department and fixed them up a bit, even with her own tool belt. You know, she fixed up that maintenance department, had her own tool belt. And then she went on to the technology department and worked for them for a little bit. And when I actually came to the district, Jean was so, Jean was so good. She was working for two departments at the same time, for personnel and for my itty-bitty one-person curriculum department. I keep emphasizing the one-person department, but anyway. But, and when I came to, to Beacon, I have to say, if it was not for Jean, and I might get a little emotional, I would not have been able to do my job. Because when I started four years ago, and I'm going to confess, I did not know what I was doing. I walked into an office that was very clean because there was nothing there. And that woman sitting right there taught me how to do my job. She unpacked that office and pulled out binders to show me where to find every piece of information. Because I was like, well, how do you do this? Where do you find that? She told me who everyone in the district was because she had every piece of history that I needed to know. She introduced me to all the people that I needed to know. She gave me every piece of information, and if there was something that she, that she didn't have, she searched for it. She asked the people that needed to be asked so that I can have everything that I needed so that I can do my job. Including the day that I almost killed her, when I had her unpacking over 100 foundation boxes. I'm so sorry. Her back was never the same. You know, there was not a thing that I asked this woman to do that she said no to. So I humbly thank you, Jean, for being my right and my left hand. And because of all the work that you did for me, I actually have a little poem for you. So Jean, and because you worked in the technology department, I had ChatGPT help me write this poem for you. So on top of all her responsibilities, so Jean actually, because of the curriculum department, she is also one of the people that she helps generate the AIS letters that gets sent out to the, to the children who receives intervention services. She approves all the professional development. She answers emails. She deals with all the vendors that tries to sell us all the curriculums. She answers all the phone calls, so she loves tea, and her favorite color is purple that she is wearing right now. So I tried to incorporate all the things that I know about Jean into this poem, and I fed it into ChatGPT. So let's see. All right. So Jean, no more spreadsheets clean and neat. No more tabs you must complete. Google Sheets can rest in peace. Your days of formulas now cease. No more memos to review with every typo catching you. No red pens or polite rewrites, just calm and hurry, quiet nights. No inbox pinging every hour, no need to check, no need to scour. The endless emails stacked with flair now traded for a comfy, a comfy chair. No more BOE action forms for review. No last minutes can you do? No signatures or dotted line, just sipping tea beneath the pines. AIS letters done at last, a steady job now in the past. No more lists or rosters why, just morning walks under purple skies. And frontline wait for, for final okay to green light PDs every day, but not from you because you've earned your piece. From those duties, you are now released. Congratulations on your retirement.
Dr. Lindell.
Just want to start by, just speaking to everyone, it's really cool to do the tenure recognition the same night as the retirement. Our goal with the people just tenured is that someday, perhaps different people doing it, because we may not still be working here, but that you, you know, achieve retirement in the district. So thank you for starting your career with us and achieving tenure. And to the retirees, you know, just want to say a huge thank you on behalf of me and all the parents in the district and all the students. Before I talk about my person, I have to take just a second because eight years ago, I, along with coming to the district as a new superintendent, was also a, you know, I'll admit it now, nervous kindergarten dad, rising kindergarten dad. And so my son had the pleasure of being in Lassito and Schnetzer's class. Let's be real, that's what you're, you know, that's what you guys go by. And I think after about day two or three, my parent nerves were gone. You know, I thought my work nerves, probably took many years to, to go away, but, but my parent nerves were gone. And it was just such a great welcome. And, and I should mention that you didn't retire the year after we had you as a family, so thanks for staying around. But, but just thank you for that. And to Luann, who was my son's first-grade teacher, all the creativity and, and different things, the trips, the Storm King trip. And to be honest, the, the trip to the Natural History Museum that the bus broke on, broke down, is still a topic of conversation with my now 13-year-old. And so anyway, that, that the effort was appreciated. And just the other day, I think this was you, just the other day, I was driving my son to roundabout. And normally, you know, Forestale hasn't started yet, but there was a group of kids doing yoga in the parking lot. And, and, you know, I kind of, I kind of looked at my son, and we both said the same time, Lassito. And indeed, you know, we figured. And indeed, you know, we figured out that it was you. So he hasn't forgotten either, so thank you, just as a dad. So it's my pleasure to speak about Brian Archer tonight. So all you teachers who are retiring and you're still in class every day, you know, up till the bitter end, we're making Brian pass out all the, you know, certificates and do all this stuff tonight, the night that we're honoring his retirement too. So it's my honor to speak about Brian tonight. Brian has been a part of the school district for 19 years in various roles, most recently serving as the principal sergeant elementary for eight years, and then the last three years as the director of human resources and student services. Brian's colleagues from sergeant remember his work fondly. He worked closely with teachers, collaborated with other principals in the district. He always took time to be with kids in the building. When Brian took the new position in the district office three years ago, right around now, I know that the teachers and the staff in the building were very sad to see his calm, steady, and positive leadership go. And I can personally attest to that because I had to go over and do the meeting where we talked about your leaving, and there was a lot of very upset people in the room. And so I know they really missed you. Over the last three years, Brian has brought that leadership style to a new position and helped us immensely by bringing some systems and structures and routines to the new HR department in the district. I've really enjoyed working more closely with Brian over the last three years and have learned a lot from him. A little more than two years ago, Brian stepped up to help the district when we really needed an interim principal at South Avenue. The school was in real need of support. Brian stepped in immediately and brought again that calming presence to the building. He immediately started implementing the joke of the day delivery to each classroom, something he did throughout his principalship at Sergeant as well, where he would walk to each classroom and share the joke of the day. I originally thought you were doing this before dad jokes were cool. But maybe the right way to say is you made the dad jokes cool, Brian. But that presence helped us get through a difficult time as a district community, and I'm very appreciative of your willingness to step up and just go right into that school community because you did it like that. The last thing I just want to say is Brian and I go to the same dry cleaner. And over the last years, one of the employees there always mixes us up. And I was there on Friday picking up some stuff, and she said, congratulations on your retirement. And so when that surprises you, a lot of things go through your head. Like, does she know something I don't? Another thing that goes through your head is, maybe I should? That would probably not be good for my retirement and family and all that kind of stuff. So then I had to, you know, correct her, I think you're talking about Brian Archer. And she's never mixed up our clothes, I don't think. But and she was like, oh, right, you're not Brian, you're, you know, the other guy. So this sort of, I, you know, calm down, I'm not retiring. That's good news, at least for me. And so then our conversation kind of ended, and she said, well, Mr. Archer's going to have a lot less dry cleaning in his future. And so indeed, Brian, here's to a lot less dry cleaning, more time with your family, more time for travel. I hope you enjoy retirement, thanks for your leadership in the district. And I know there's been some other deals being made tonight. If you come back and be a substitute administrator for us, I'll pick up your dry cleaning. So anyway, with all of that, and, okay, we're not going to make Brian hand it to himself. Mr. Archer, thank you.
One more joke for you.
Yeah. You have one?
I've told this one a number of times, but why should you never play Uno at the zoo?
Why?
Thank you, everybody. There's cake and refreshments in the cafeteria.
We are going to hear any comments from our student representatives. I'm so glad you guys are here tonight. So Nadine, you want to start?
I actually have a question. What's the process for getting tenured for teachers?
It takes four years. And there, we have an evaluation system. So they're observed at least three times a year by not just one administrator, but several different administrators. They get a year-end evaluation. So for four years, that kind of, they kind of compile a record. And then the principal of each school will write a tenure recommendation based on all of that information.
Have you ever considered asking students what they thought about the teachers?
It wouldn't be something that we could put into like a formal evaluation, but yeah, for sure. We could.
Thank you.
That's really interesting question. Sarah, what about you?
I just want to say, like, thank you to all of you guys because I'm a senior this year, so this is going to be my last time coming to one of the board meetings. And I haven't been like super good at attendance recently, super busy. But yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for making this an opportunity for me to be here. Thank you again for adding Muslim holidays to the school calendar. That meant so much to me. It really did inspire me throughout all of high school. And it's just been such a great experience. So I just, I just want to thank you guys. Yeah.
That's so nice. Thank you, guys. And I'm always surprised, year after year, by the insightful questions that you guys ask, the perspective that you bring. It's always something I never would have thought of, and we definitely learn from you. And I really appreciate you being here and taking the time. I know what a commitment it is. So thank you to you guys, I really appreciate you. And moving on to Matt, your...
Yeah, just, I want to echo what Flora said to Sarah and Nadine. Thank you both for your service. Kiana was here earlier to her as well. And Messiah was able to make a few meetings earlier in the year. We really appreciate that. You may or may not know, but the state passed a law for next year that there has to be student representatives on every board. So finally, they've passed a law that we're all set for, and we're good. And so that's exciting. But it's been really great over the last couple of years to have your questions and your insight into the things we do. And, you know, giving up a few hours every couple of weeks is a huge thing. So thank you both. And then just my other update is we, you know, we're, I don't have anything definitive to say, but we're working on, you know, implementing the cell phone restriction law. And so we sent a survey out, and we have had a lot of students filling it out, a lot of staff and a lot of parents. We're going to be compiling that data this week and then working on refining the policy, dealing with a few of the procedural things. And we'll be sharing that in the next few weeks with both, you know, general public and board. But the goal of at the end of July, you know, having everything completely mapped out so we're ready for the communication part in August, just in terms of getting the students ready for that. So that's just, that's just my update with that. And, you know, again, thank you to our students.
Thank you. We're jumping around a little bit. I did forget to mention that there are no changes to the agenda for tonight. So we can move on now to comments and committee reports, starting with Semra.
Thanks again to the student representatives, you're awesome. Thanks, sorry about the chair mix up again. And thank you to everyone who earned their tenure and their retirement. Well-deserved and, you know, bravo, thanks.
Okay, great. Alina?
I just want to obviously thank the students. It does take time to come here, and your questions are insightful and meaningful. And it's more than just about yourself, it's usually about your students, your peers. Congratulations to all of the recipients of being tenured and retirement. And then I just want to say thank you to everyone. Today's my last board meeting. I really learned a lot being here these last three years. Moving to Beacon in, I don't remember what year it was. My youngest started fifth grade, and she's going into twelfth grade next year, so whatever that math is. Just feeling a part of the community, the people that work in Beacon, the family members. Like, they literally made me feel welcome from day one. And then being a part of the board off of just Christina Dahl asking me, you're always helping out here and there, why don't you be a part of the board? And I thought, why not? And I've learned so much, it's made me a better person, a better adult, a better parent, a better community member. So I just want to, I appreciate, let you guys know, I appreciate the time that I spent on the board and wish the board and everyone else continued success. My daughter still has one more year, but my schedule's getting full. So it just became a lot, but I really appreciate my time here and getting to know everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
So many transitions tonight. Thanks, Selena, thanks Sarah and Nadine. And also congratulations to the teachers receiving tenure and retiring. You know, my son was lucky enough to be in Mrs. Lassito's class. Once Lavender, always Lavender, and it's just a wonderful, Matt, your story resonated with me for just a lovely introduction to the district. And so grateful for Ms. Lassito and Ms. Schnetzler's service. And I know that's replicated so many times over across the district. So congratulations and thank you too for the speeches, which give us a little bit of insight into the things that we don't see on a day-to-day basis and what makes all of the staff so special. So congratulations.
Great. Levon?
Just want to say good luck to our student representatives on your future endeavors. Appreciate your time here on the board. I also want to say congratulations to all those that received tenure this evening and those who retired. And that's it.
Eric?
I echo that. Thanks to our students, thanks, Alina. It was nice to get to know you and work with you. You'll be missed. Thanks to our tenure recipients as well and to those receiving that are retiring. I wanted to mention just about facilities. We had a meeting this evening. And just for the board, the Tetra Tech will be here with all of the members of the committee to report to the entire board on July 21st, which is to kind of get everybody up to speed as to where we are. You'll be getting some information that Friday or the week before. So you'll be able to go through some of the information. They'll be here to kind of go through the phases of our new, of the new project. And you ask any questions and then also to enlighten the community because there's some really good stuff coming down the road that we're very excited about. And so we'll be able to get some information out in July. And the next meeting will be 6 o'clock on September 22nd. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anthony?
Congratulations to all the retirees for the tenure people. It's just starting, keep that bar high. Alina, it's been a pleasure serving with you. I enjoyed serving the time on the board with you. You bring great insight and common sense, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Meredith?
Congratulations to all the tenure recipients and retirees. I hope the retirees have great relaxing times ahead of them. And thank you to our student school representatives, you guys have been awesome. Sarah, congratulations and good luck with your future endeavors. Maybe you're not graduating.
No.
Hold that, hope maybe you'll be serving with us next year. We had a policy meeting, we discussed the cell phone policy and our conflict of interest policy. We didn't finish either of those discussions. Our next meeting is July 16th, and we'll finish them then. I wanted to, I sent the board this, but I just wanted to make a public announcement that Bill Vaniver of the Vaniver Caravan passed away this weekend. He's been an integral part of our district for 35 years also. So sending my condolences to the Vaniver family. Alina? Thank you. We've gotten through some hard conversations together, and it's been a real pleasure serving with you. Thank you very much. And then the last thing I just wanted to say is thank you to the parents that came to speak about their concerns with special ed. It is not easy to stand up and speak publicly. And it's an interesting night for this to happen. You know, we celebrate our teachers coming on, we celebrate our retirees, and we understand that our work is never done. So I just wanted to acknowledge that for them.
That's a good way of putting it. I just wanted to say congratulations to everyone on their tenure and retirement. It's so cool for me, as I've, as my kids have grown up in the district, that more and more at these events, I see teachers that I have this personal connection to because of how they've served and helped my children. And so my feelings around this event have only grown as time has gone on. And to me, that's, that's like one of those definitions of community that I didn't understand until I started having that experience here. So I'm really, I'm really happy that I get to be a part of that. And even though I said it before, I just want to say that I'm so glad that you guys were here this year with us to serve on the board. And I'm just so proud that we have such thoughtful and engaged students in our district. You are such a great representation of the best of this district. And I have like nothing but, but high hopes for you as you move forward in life. And Nadine, yes, I agree, I hope we see you again next year. I also wanted to say to Alina, thank you for being such a, such a good voice in discussions, asking questions, not being afraid to have those conversations, and also being, bringing like humor and making me laugh when sometimes I just really need to laugh in a meeting, and I really appreciate that. And you, yeah, you are going to be missed. And you never know what kind of board member somebody is going to be when somebody joins the board. And you were such a great, a great addition to this board, and I'm really grateful for your time here. I think I might be forgetting something, but...
Can I just jump in really quickly too?
You can.
Alina, I think I was in denial about this being your last meeting. And I think we're saying goodbye to everybody else, so I want to apologize about that. But I also just want to say, you really, as a parent, brought the student perspective to the board, and I really appreciate this. And I know every board member makes a sacrifice to be on that, and I'm always grateful for that. I know you were always doing a long drive and a long day to get here. And so I just want to appreciate that because that's a huge sacrifice, so thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, moving on to the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Are there any items that any board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
I have two.
Okay. Okay.
And 11.14N9.
Okay.
I have one as well.
Okay.
12.03-C. That's it.
Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve 11, no, sorry, 10.01 through 14.08 minus 11.10K30 and 11.14N9 and 12.03-C?
So moved.
Second. Okay, comments or questions? Thank you for the donations, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose none, okay, passes. Eight, zero, okay. Can I have a motion to approve 11.10K30?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Chris. Okay, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, passes, sevens, two, zero. Is that how, Vicky?
One abstention, yeah.
Oh, seven with two abstentions?
I messed up by accident.
Oh, okay. No, no, that's okay. Okay, so seven with one abstention. Okay. All right, can I have a motion to approve 11.14N9?
So moved.
Second?
Semra, second by. Alina, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstained?
Abstained.
Okay, passes, seven zero with one abstention. Lastly, can I have a motion to approve 12.03-C?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Meredith, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, passes, seven zero with one abstention. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual that board does not plan on returning?
So moved.
Okay, second, second by Alina, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes eight zero. Good night.